Listening to the Pitt County Board of Commissioners meeting for April 3, 2020. Here Zoom and welcome. At this time, I will call the Pitt County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. May we have invocation by Commissioner Beth Ward and the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Tom Post.
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins, we need to have a roll call vote and also need to excuse Commissioner Vice Chairman Fitzpatrick for a medical reason today.
Okay, I always want to get the roll call after the call meeting. I'm sorry. Okay, I mean, yeah. At this time, we'll have a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Yes, Chairwoman.
I'm sorry, we have a motion to excuse Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Motion to move.
Okay, it's been moved in a second that we excuse Commissioner Vice Chairman Mike Fitzpatrick. Are you ready for the vote?
Yes, Chairwoman Floyd Huggins.
Yes.
Commissioner Albright.
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson.
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Nonley.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Now, are we ready for invocation? Or do we need another roll call?
Roll call, please.
Okay.
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins.
Yes.
Commissioner Albright.
Here.
Commissioner Coulson.
Here.
Commissioner McLawhorn.
Yes, here.
Commissioner Nonley.
Here.
Commissioner Ward.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
Here.
All right, I believe, thank you, Madam Clerk. I believe we're now ready for invocation and pledge.
Yes, ma'am.
You want me to just go on in?
Yes.
Okay. If you'll stand or bow your head if you'd like. Most gracious heavenly Father, we ask that you look down upon us tonight and give us your strength and your guidance as we strive to do what's best for Pitt County and the citizens. Forgive us if we have made you upset or concerned today and guide us in thy will. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, everybody, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Ward and Commissioner Coulson. At this time, we will need a motion to amend the agenda for tonight and we will, yes. Commissioner Nonley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we remove, under items per decision, sale of county-owned property, item number four, remove that from the agenda and also move close session, item 11, up to our first item following.
The manager's report.
Manager's report and then otherwise approval of the agenda.
Have a second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in a second that we amend the agenda with those two corrections or amendments. Are you ready for the vote? Madam Clerk.
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins.
Yes.
Commissioner Albright.
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson.
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Nonley.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We're now at the public address to the board. Mr. Manager, do we have any signups?
Yes, ma'am, we have two people signed up and if the county attorney will read our statement on public address at the board, we will proceed with calling the two individuals.
Good evening. Pitt County welcomes comments on all matters of public concern. When you begin to speak, please keep your comments to three minutes, state your name and address prior to speaking, and we'll let you know when your time has concluded. Please note that pursuant to county policy, the commissioners will not respond to your requests at the meeting this evening. Thank you.
First, we have William Gaston.
Scott William Gaston has not logged in. Scott William Gaston has not logged in at this time. The only person on our list is Ms. Newman.
Okay. The second person we had signed up is Yoshi Newman.
This is Yoshi Newman and my address, I'm going to defer giving the actual house number, but it's Quail Hollow Road, Greenville, North Carolina. I'm glad to have a chance to speak with you all tonight. I do have an agenda item, but before I do that very quickly, I just want to mention two things. One is, if you haven't had a chance to look at the Google Doodle today, it's that little animated video, wherever you go to Google, I encourage you to do that. It has five very, very short videos about students and teachers and just very, very touching stories. And as you know, the Board of Education is meeting tonight with regard to reviewing and approving a budget that will come to you with most likely a significant increase. And I know this was a very difficult discussion last year. I want to, ahead of that issue, just mention that since the schools have closed in COVID, a veteran teacher said to me, no matter how long you've been teaching, overnight, you became a first-year teacher. And so, in light of all that our teachers and parents and students have been through to, you know, carefully consider additional budget allocations, we have many veteran, I think some number of veteran teachers who are actively seeking to leave the field of teaching, looking for other positions. So, very difficult decision, I know, but again, I know this is important community-wide. But the issue that I actually signed up for tonight is to address Sheriff Dance's request for a change in the contracting policy regarding jail medical records. Sheriff Dance, during the time of her tenure, has shown us to be an exemplary sheriff who point by point and step by step has made the right decisions to best serve our community. I would go so far as to say that she has been the forefront of what many people, myself included, would like to see with regard to a reorganization of law enforcement resources, more toward public service resources. And I am so thankful for her service, for her vision. Again, it comes down to a budget issue, and I know this is always very difficult for, very difficult decision, Commissioners, but in this particular case, I was very surprised to hear that we're still operating with a very antiquated paper version of medical files. So, to go to an electronic system is just bringing Pitt County into the 21st century. And it looks very bad on us that we don't already have this system in place. So, I'm asking for your support of Sheriff Dance's request and also just, you know, and part of that being an acknowledgement of what an asset she's been to our county and the exemplary service that she's provided. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Madam Chairwoman, that's all the public addresses we have signed up for tonight.
Thank you. We'll now move to items for report and the first item to report is a report from our Health Director, Senator Sevenair.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Manager, Madam Attorney. Close that and, all right. So, let me say thanks again for listening to me. I'm sure you all are tired of listening to me and I look forward to the day when I won't have to report to COVID, on COVID to you with such frequency. Start out by talking about vaccinations in Pitt County. This is where we stand as of midnight last night, essentially. The State Health Department follows data through midnight of the day before and then reports it the next day. So, today's the 3rd, these are our numbers through midnight on the 2nd or last night. Fifty-five thousand, five hundred sixteen first doses, that would be the combined administrations of Moderna and Pfizer vaccine. Fifty-one thousand, two hundred seventeen individuals fully vaccinated, that would be Moderna, Pfizer, or those who have received J&amp;J. Thirty-point-seven percent of our county population is partially vaccinated and twenty-eight-point-three percent of our county population is fully vaccinated. If you had asked me how much would be vaccinated by the 1st of May, 1st part of May, back in December when we first got the vaccine, I don't know that I would have, would have given you this high of a number. I thought it would have been a slower process. So, I think, I think we've done pretty well to have almost thirty percent of our county fully vaccinated is an accomplishment in a little over four months. Vaccine equity, we've been very concerned about this throughout the vaccine campaign, the COVID vaccine campaign. If we look at our African-American community, twenty-eight-point-five percent of the vaccine given in Pitt County has gone to African-Americans, represents thirty-six-point-nine percent of our county population. So, they're about, they are eight-point-four percent behind, there is a lag in that population. We've closed that gap a little bit. It was eight-point-six percent a few days ago. So, it is closing slowly with our African-American friends, but they still, still lag behind by eight points and change. Our Hispanic or Latinx community has received five-point-two percent of vaccines given in Pitt County. They represent six-point-five percent of the Pitt County population. So, they are lagging by one-point-three percent and they're, they're, they're a smaller number, so we're going to close that gap faster than we are with African-Americans, just based on the mathematics of it. For full disclosure, whites are sixty-one percent of vaccines given with, with whites representing sixty percent of the Pitt County population, so they're one percent ahead of their breakdown in the, in the Pitt County demographic, but not tremendously ahead. Vaccines are available from a number of providers in Pitt County. They are available through the Health Department, they are available through Biden. ECU has been providing these through Student Health Services, the students at, at the campus, as well as some of the faculty and staff at the campus. Dr. Shackelford's mobile team has been out continuing to give vaccines in the county and throughout eastern North Carolina. And then multiple pharmacies, both some of the larger chain pharmacies and some of our more local pharmacies are in the mix now and giving COVID-19 vaccines. So, it is, it is broadly available in the community at this point. And I would mention, all persons old enough to receive a given vaccine are now eligible to receive that vaccine, so there's no more stratification of vaccine recipients at this time. Demand for the COVID-19 vaccine has unfortunately decreased. We continue to provide COVID-19 vaccine at the Health Department. Last week, we decided to take the vaccine to the streets in an effort to increase COVID-19 vaccine uptake and my staff went out on Thursday and visited some mobile home parks in the Belvoir area and vaccinated residents willing to be vaccinated. They also spent some time at a convenience store and dollar store up in that area and gave out some vaccinations up there. The number was, was less than we had hoped for, but, but they were able to get some vaccine to, into folks up there. On Friday, they set up a pop-up clinic at the Tropicana Store on Route 11 in Greenville here and were able to vaccinate twenty individuals there. And the manager said, hey, the first Friday of the month is really busy, you ought to come back. So, I believe they are planning to go back there this Friday and try to do some more vaccinations. We're going to continue to do these pop-up clinics on Thursdays and Fridays for the foreseeable future in our efforts to take the vaccine to the people and make it convenient for our residents to receive the vaccine. The Johnson &amp; Johnson or Janssen vaccine, as you have probably heard in the news, is no longer paused. The blood clot rate reported with use of the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine was zero-point-eight-seven per million doses given. For comparison, the risk of Guillain-Barre syndrome, or GBS, after influenza vaccine is reported at one to two cases per million by the CDC website. And most of us wouldn't think twice about getting a flu vaccine. So, that zero-point-eight-seven per million rate for the blood clots should not weigh heavily on people's minds, but I know that it does because this is a new vaccine and it's an unusual complication, which has only been seen in women. Basically, they have reproductive years from eighteen to forty-eight. So, we, I understand that statistically it is, is a rare occurrence, but to people considering the vaccine, that that may be a, a roadblock for some people considering the one-dose J vaccine. Our Pitt County data, we've been rolling through a little bit of a spring wave of data. This was our, our data at the last, well, the first Board of Commissioners meeting last month. We were at about nineteen-point-six cases per day, having had two-hundred-seventy-five cases over the last fourteen days. That was slightly increased from the previous set of numbers. Our active cases, we're still at one-point-five, which was basically stable at that time. We had had about nine-point-nine percent of our Pitt County residents infected, a little over eighteen thousand total cases. Of those, we estimated seventeen thousand plus were almost eighteen thousand, were recovered or ninety-eight percent of cases. And our case, cases, fatal cases were unchanged at eighty-six, case fatality rate zero-point-five and returning tests were at three-point-six percent positive. This is our numbers last week when I did our, my weekly media session last week, we were at forty-two-point-two cases per day. Our active cases were at three-point-two per thousand residents. We're up to ten-point-four percent of the county being, having been infected at some point with ninety-six-point-five percent of our cases recovered and we're still holding steady at eighty-six fatalities. And our case fatality rate was zero-point-four percent. Our percentage of positivity had risen to seven-point-eight percent. Our numbers were a little bit higher on the 28th, but they started down on Thursday, the 29th. They were down again on the 30th. The state does not report numbers over the weekend and here's the numbers from today and they have continued. So, this is the third day in a row that we have come down from last week. Five-hundred-thirty-three total cases over the last fourteen days, that's down to thirty-eight-point-one cases per day, back just under three, three cases per thousand, two-point-nine cases per thousand. Total cases to date, nineteen-thousand-three-hundred-seventy-seven, that's ten-and-a-half percent of our Pitt County residents having been infected with COVID at some point. We would estimate that eighteen-thousand-seven-hundred-fifty-eight of those individuals have recovered. That's ninety-six-point-eight percent of our, our individuals being recovered and we are steady at eighty-six fatal cases per the public health surveillance definition that we're required to report based on. Our case fatality rate remains low at zero-point-four and our returning test positivity has decreased back to seven-point-two percent. So, we know in the, in the rest of the COVID surveillance, the COVID has kind of mimicked a typical flu curve. We have in the, generally seen a spring wave of influenza that begins around the third week or so of March and lasts through the first two or three weeks of April and then, then fades away. The data would suggest that we are on the backside of that spring wave with three consecutive days of declining numbers, but in COVID, all bets are off, but I'm hoping that we're going to continue to follow that typical flu curve and that our cases will continue to trend downward from here. COVID-19 testing in Pitt County, just wanted to touch on a couple of points here for you all this evening. Testing remains broadly available across the medical providers of Pitt County. We continue to test four thousand or more individuals per week, most weeks, and those numbers do not include tests that are conducted at home in the, say, Fiesta, the COVID test program, which we are running. This is a graph from the NC COVID data showing our estimated total tests per week and the blue line is the four thousand test per week line. And you see the last couple of weeks, we've been just above or just below four thousand tests per week. So, I think that's still a pretty good number of tests being run in the committee, the community every week and if someone needs to be tested, there's, there's multiple options for them to get tested. Say yes to the COVID test as of last week, we had given out more than twelve-thousand test kits and that was through the Health Department and our community partners. Each of those test kits is twenty-five tests per kit. We, we did not have numbers based on those that were ordered through online. There's an online site where these kits can be ordered as well. We do know that people are testing, we have several individuals have contacted the Health Department for results. They've had positive results and they've contacted us just to, to make sure that they were doing the right things. I will mention Pitt County is the first jurisdiction in the nation to run this at-home testing program and we've received some, some positive news coverage of being in the national news agencies. CBS has done a story on this, NBC did a story on this, and there was a print article in the Washington Post about the COVID, say yes to the COVID test program last week. So, I'm, I'm picking out and getting some national, national news coverage. That's the end of my presentation and I'm happy to take your questions if you have any questions.
I see Commissioner Albright.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Commissioner? Yeah, thank you, Dr. Silvernell, for the reporting, for your, all your efforts and I think pop-ups sounds like a great idea and I hope we can continue keeping those down. One, one question, is there any data on the number of new cases as to whether those people have been vaccinated and if so, what vaccinations they've gotten?
Not that I have immediately accessible to me, that is something that is being followed right now. I have not seen the summary report, but I will see if I can find one for you. We do know that, that the immunity is not perfect from the vaccine and we are aware of some cases where individuals who are vaccinated have tested positive, but it does not seem to be a large number.
Okay, thank you. I guess I'm looking at it from a different point of view, that maybe people would be more likely to get the vaccine if they knew that the large, larger percentage of them who were, who were testing positive had not been vaccinated. But anyway, thank you very much.
Yeah, it's, it's a few cases, Commissioner, not, not an overwhelming amount.
Yeah, but I think that, that information would be helpful for people that are still sort of on the fence. Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Dr. Silvernell, I received a call during the weekend about a person who was experiencing problem with the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccination and she was trying to find, where should she go for help? She was looking for a hotline for somebody to give instructions about what to do. Is it all right that I give this person your, because I don't like being in the middle of health stuff, personal stuff. Give her your telephone number so that she can call you and she, she's just waiting and I just thought this would be a good time to point it out so that someone else who's having a problem can hear.
Yep, you can give her our, our switchboard number and they can refer her to me, that would be fine, Commissioner.
That's the twenty-three-hundred number.
Twenty-three-hundred and I'll let, I'll let my receptionist know to expect the call.
Thank you very much. And I think I'll be happy too when we can start going back to normal. So, let's get the test, let's get the vaccinations and let's do what we need to do, residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Silvernell. I don't see any more hands, so there are no more questions for you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chairman. Have a good evening.
Thank you, same to you. We'll now move to the manager's report, Scott.
Yes, Madam Chairwoman. Several things to report on tonight. One, your next meeting date is beginning tomorrow. We begin budget workshops beginning at eight-thirty in the morning to approximately lunchtime for Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday. That's May 4th, 5th and 6th. We also reserve next week as the second week possible, if needed, for additional budget workshops. We rarely go into that and I'm hoping that with this year's budget, we will not need it, but if so, it's, it is on the schedule. Otherwise, we meet on Monday, May 17th at 6:00 PM for your next regular meeting. Item B is a litigation update. We wanted to, the county attorney, county attorney and I wanted to update you regarding the animal shelter litigation and the ongoing nationwide opioid suit. I'm going to turn this over to Janice and ask her to provide the update on this.
Good evening again. Two things to report on, as Scott had suggested. I am pleased to report that we've resolved the litigation involving the animal shelter construction and renovation project and wanted to report that out at the public meeting as required by law. You may recall that last year, the surety paid the county seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for damages following a breach of contract by Bernie and Bernie. And we've been holding that money pending resolution of the lawsuit filed by Bernie and Bernie against the county and against the surety. Following a mediation on March 16th, 2021, all of the parties, meaning the county, the surety and Bernie and Bernie, entered into a global settlement agreement whereby the county paid nothing to Bernie and Bernie, but we returned two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand of the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand to the surety to net a five-hundred-thousand-dollar payment to the county under the performance bond. Bernie and Bernie will dismiss their lawsuit against the county outright and they've done so today. Additionally, Bernie and Bernie will pay the surety two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in damages in exchange for a dismissal of the surety's lawsuit against Bernie and Bernie and Bernie and Bernie's lawsuit against the surety. So, overall, I believe this was a very good resolution for the county. I appreciate the assistance of Mike Mitchell and Andrew Atkins at Smith Anderson for their help. Happy to answer any questions about that if anyone has any.
I don't see any hands, Madam Attorney.
Okay, then I'll move on to the next matter on opioid litigation, if I may. And in this case, as you may recall, the county filed a lawsuit against various drug distributors and manufacturers alleging various causes of action that led to the opioid crisis in America and particularly here in Pitt County. Seventy-six other counties in North Carolina also filed suit against these defendants, as well as eight municipalities, none of those municipalities being here in Pitt County, and the state of North Carolina. All of the North Carolina cases were joined with other cases throughout the country and it appears that this national combined lawsuit is now close to settlement. The proposed national settlement is expected to be twenty-six billion dollars paid by the defendants, of which about eight-hundred-and-fifty million would come to North Carolina, paid out annually over an eighteen-year period. That payment would be divided between the state, the counties and the municipalities with populations over seventy-five thousand dollars pursuant to a formula that would be agreed upon by all of the, all one hundred counties, the state and certain of the municipalities. The North Carolina Association of County Commissioners and a group of five county attorneys, five county managers and five commissioners have been working with the state to develop an MOU or an MOA, memorandum of agreement, as to a distribution formula and they've come to an agreement on the form of that MOA. That MOA would give eighty-five percent of the funds to local governments and fifteen percent to the state. So, why such a heavy distribution to local governments? That's because counties are the ones who provide the bulk of human services, in response especially to opioid-related matters. So, in order to take the next step and move the national settlement forward, all one hundred counties and the affected municipalities must sign the North Carolina memorandum of agreement, which sets forth that eighty-five-fifteen distribution formula. I've reviewed all of the documents in connection with it and I'm satisfied that it's in Pitt County's best interest to sign that MOA. The city of Greenville, based on their population, will also have to sign that MOA. So, this is just for your information purposes today only. I'm here to answer any questions you may have and at your next meeting, I'll bring back that memorandum of agreement for you, for your review and approval. That's all I have on the opioid matter.
Okay. Saying no hands for questions. I want to go back to the county manager. Okay. Seeing no hands for questions. I want to go back to the county manager and ask him to explain the budget workshop, what they are for the benefit of the public, and also let the public know when they can have input.
Yes, ma'am. So for the budget workshops, well, tonight, I'll, on the item number seven on the agenda, I will be presenting the recommended budget that will begin July 1st for fiscal year 2122. This will be the operating budget for all the different funds, the general fund, plus all the other operating funds of Pitt County government. And then beginning tomorrow, and then Wednesday and Thursday, from 8:30 to 12, we will have the major agencies or departments coming in to make their budget presentations as well that coincide with some of the information we'll hear tonight. Some of the requests will go above and beyond what I've recommended. The public will have an opportunity on this budget. We have a public hearing scheduled for June. The staff?
Seventh.
Seventh?
I believe.
It should be a Tuesday, I believe. It's in our budget book.
Eighth.
Budget eighth, June 8th at 7:00 PM, as I recall. So the public will have an opportunity through a public hearing to?
Six.
Six, okay. June 8th at 6:00 PM. Okay, thank you. We'll have, the public will have an opportunity to address the Board of Commissioners regarding the budget as to their likes or dislikes or whatnot on the budget. And then we do have an alternate date, I think, two weeks later, in case that June date, the first June date is not workable with the board, that we could consider it later on.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to explain it a little bit more for, for the benefit of the public. So if they, they will have an opportunity to have input.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. You may now go to the next item.
Okay. On item C of my report, the PGV letters of support, that the Pitt Greenville Airport has asked the county to, actually, asked the chairwoman to sign a letter of support regarding funding they're seeking from the federal government to repave a, one of their runways out there, and they are seeking, I think it's about $9 million for this. The chairwoman did sign a letter, one to Congressman Murphy and the other two Congressman Butterfield. So they are hoping to get this $9.6 million that will add another 20 years to this existing runway. This is not an expansion of any runway. This is a repaving of an existing runway. Just want to be clear on that. I know there's always concerns of extensions. On item D, Candlewick, as the board is aware, we have applied for CDBG funds, actually, CDBGI, which stands for infrastructure through the state. These are federal funds. The I is infrastructure for sewer. We're hoping to do the next phase of sewer out there at Candlewick. We unfortunately received a letter saying that our funding did not score high enough compared to other projects across the state of North Carolina. We have been encouraged to consider reapplying possibly this fall, so we'll look at that opportunity, as well as if there are any other opportunities out there to consider funding for that project. And, Madam Chairwoman, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Manager. At this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session.
This is Commissioner White. I'll make the motion ago.
Second that.
Okay. It's been moved to second, that we go into closed session. Are you ready for a question? Madam, Madam Clerk.
If I may read the basis first. It's been suggested that this board go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143318.11a3, attorney-client privilege to consult with an attorney employed by the public body, also under GS 143318.11a1, to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential pursuant to this law, or not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the North Carolina General Statutes. For this evening's closed session, because of the Zoom format, in order to begin closed session, everyone except for the commissioners are asked to manually leave the meeting by clicking the red "Leave Meeting" button, which will appear at the bottom of your screen. When the closed session is concluded, you'll receive an email which includes a link to return to the virtual meeting. So for those cleared to participate in closed session, also, please wait until you hear verbal confirmation from Public Information Office staff before discussing the closed session matter. And with that, I'll turn it to the clerk for the vote.
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Colson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you. Okay. We are now in closed session. Okay. It's been moved to second, that our closed session minutes for March 15th be approved. Are you ready for a question? Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am. And this motion will be combined for approval of the minutes as well as roll call. Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes, that's, that's right. Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Colson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Both motions passed unanimously.
All right. Thank you. We'll now move to item seven, presentation, budget presentation by Scott and Brian.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. We are back on the regular agenda now. So for tonight, we are presenting to you the proposed operating budget for fiscal year 2122. Before you, you should have the power, the PowerPoint printed version of it, as well as the additional binder that has additional information in it. The binder has backup information that backs up the slides. Sometimes it's larger information, sometimes it's expanded information. In the back of the binder, you've got the schedule for Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. You've got the associated PowerPoint presentations for each day that go along with, with each, each day. So the first slide, if we can put that up? Okay, it's just displaying, this can display largest we can get it on the screen for the commissioners to see.
They see the full.
They see the full screen. Okay, all right, thank you. All right. So your priorities, these have remained unchanged. These were affirmed by you as a board back at your CFP workshop first of the year. I need to read these out. We know what they are. You affirmed them, and these guide us in the budget process. Guiding principles on the next slide, as normal, we, the requests were evaluated against the board's goals and priorities. We have a balanced budget with revenues meeting expenditures. We're using fund balance as a normal plug for what I'm calling recurring needs, and we continue with the base budget plus efficient funds this year for a number of one-time expenditures via fund balance. And we're going to talk about those as we get along in this presentation. I did want to note that Brian Barnett and I will be playing tag team with this presentation. He will go over some parts of it, and I will, I'll do the balance. So on the next slide, for the recommended budget for all funds, general fund plus all the different operating funds, currently in the current fiscal year, you have almost a $260 million overall operating budget for the entire organization. For 2122, that jumps to $281,464,116. This includes one-time building projects that we are proposing to be cash-funded and not borrow and incur interest charges on, and we'll discuss those in detail. So overall, amongst all the funds, you have a 8.3% increase. If you were to take out the, the, the one-time projects, it would be pretty much a normal 3.76% increase. Again, we'll get in details of this. Next slide, tax rate. Current tax rate is 68.91. I'm recommending a decrease in the rate of half a penny to 68.41. And if you look on page six in your binder, we give you a tax rate, population history of Pitt County. We've had a few instances where the tax rate has been adjusted, whether through a reevaluation or through just basically an adjustment in the rate due to, to needs. Those have been not frequent. They have, they have occurred through the last 20, 21 years, and you can see those as you go through. There's probably about six times, maybe. On the next slide, the recommended budget for the general fund, general fund being the overall fund that, that really drives the ad valorem tax rate. The request from all the departments was over $198 million. Myself and staff, Brian Barnett and the finance staff drove those, those requests down, $4.7 million. We did include two building projects. One would be the Sheriff's Administration Office Building. Second would be a DSS expansion at the Human Services Center. Each project, 6 million, 12 million total. We are recommending those be cash-funded with no borrowing and using excess fund balance that we will discuss as we move along. Proposed budget is $205,936,044 compared to the adopted budget. If you look at the percent change, it would be 12.93%. Take out the, the one-time projects, and you're to a 6.35% increase in the budget. In terms of revenue, revenue review, if I can spit the words out, you will see a pie chart on the next slide showing your revenue sources, your major revenue source being ad valorem taxes. Second normally comes in sales tax, and you see the other revenues as, as identified. So revenues, this table here for all funds, shows the amount of money per revenue source, again, whether ad valorem taxes, intergovernmental, sales and service, interest, and so forth. If you, if you'll go down to the fund balances appropriated, you see that is 19, 19,369,686, which is a large amount of money. Again, 12 million of that is for these two building projects we're recommending to proceed with, and we will explain where we, where we landed on that big of an amount of money in fund balance to get to these projects. Then you have your inter-fund transfers, which again includes that 12 million in there. Your next slide, so again, the recommended rate, 68 cents, 68.41 cents. This is based upon a tax-based estimate based upon $15.1 billion. That's about a half a billion dollars, a little greater than half a billion dollars over the current year. It's a 3.95% increase in the base, and that is, that's as we have concluded the reevaluation last year. The base continues to grow even after we have done a reevaluation. Proposed changes in terms of the fees, we have very limited changes in here. One is due to a court order to reduce the charges for sexually-oriented business ordinance. In terms of a business license application fee, we're proposing to reduce that from $1,000 to $500. The other is a, an increase at the solid waste recycling for shingles tipping fee. We're proposing to go from $6 to $10. Our current contractor, as I recall the conversation, will no longer be hauling the shingles for us. We now have to incur the cost to, to haul those to that, the operator. Thus, this increased cost per ton will allow us to recoup some of those transportation costs. So that concludes the fee changes. I'm going to now turn it over to Brian to talk about fund balance, which is probably where most of attention and focus in terms of follow-up will be. Brian?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board of Commissioners. So on our fund balance slides, just to reiterate, our fund balance is our savings account. You know, one of its main focuses is to help us throughout the year. As you guys know, when you're looking at property taxes, the bulk of that money comes in basically in two phases. One, in the late summer, early fall, and then again, as the calendar year turns, is when we get our two largest amounts of money from property tax. So our fund balance is what we use as a cash flow standpoint to keep us afloat all fiscal year. We do utilize fund balance for our one-time opportunities and emergencies. This particular budget is looking at a couple of opportunities that we've talked about on our capital improvement plan. We, we're looking at that, looking at our fund balance to help cash fund these particular projects, the two main ones being the DSS building and the Sheriff's Administratives building. This will allow us an opportunity to avoid having to go out and borrow the money, which is the last bullet point, where we do, our fund balance is evaluated by the rating agencies, and it does help us with interest rates. So this particular budget is looking at using that fund balance to cash fund these particular two projects over the next, and it's probably going to be a two-year period, just knowing how it takes to go out and get bids and to design the buildings and to actually construct them. But we're looking at fund balance to help with those two particular projects. Just so you also reiterate the fact that you all have a stated goal of 18 to 20% of our fund balance compared to our general fund expenditures. We do look at a group of peer counties just to see where we stack up. And this particular year, when we look at how the fiscal year ended at 2020, June 30 of 2020, our peer counties roughly had 33% was their fund balance percentage compared to general fund. I will point out, which is going to be in our next slide, you will see that that 33% is up about 4.6% from FY19. So as you can see, fund balance across the state is growing, so we're not the only county in this particular situation. And then lastly, with fund balance, you know, we, we do try to limit the amount of times that we, that we tap into fund balance for those reoccurring operational expenses, because we don't want to, we don't want to become accustomed to having to use fund balance to keep those expenses going. I know the numbers on here are probably a little hard to see on the screen, but you do have them in front of you, as you can see from 2013, which is one of our lowest fund balance percentages up until where we estimate 2020 to end. By utilizing fund balance to help on the, on these two major capital projects, it will bring, will actually bring our fund balance percentage up compared to how we ended 2020 at 21.29% to 25.73%, which is, which is still well above your stated goal of 18 to 20%. And then if you look at the 2020 actuals, you can see, when you compare it to the 2019 actuals, you can see where our peer counties and across the state, the percentage of fund balance has gone up across the state. And then here, it just illustrates it more from 2013 to 2021, how the change in fund balance, whereas in 2013, we were down to 15%, and we're looking at 2021 to put us almost at 26%. On the expenditure side, similar to how we looked at it from the revenue standpoint, you can see on the pie chart here, our breakdown of our expenditures. As you can see, based on your priorities, our top three have remained the same, with education, public safety, and human services leading the way. We did add a new group in here towards about two-thirds the way down. You will see transfer to project ordinance. That percentage makes up the two large capital projects for the DSS building and the Sheriff's Administration building. I will point out that public safety did jump almost 2% from last fiscal year, and human services is up a half a percent from last fiscal year. Here's a mathematical illustration of the breakdown of those expenditures by grouping. Again, about two-thirds of the way down, you will see a transfer to project ordinance. Theoretically, that does sit in our general government category, but we, we felt that it was appropriate to break that out on its own. When you consider the large capital expenditure, it needed to sit outside of just the general government grouping. And I'm going to turn it back over to Scott for education funding.
Thank you, Brian. Before we hit education funding, just did want to note that, as the board is aware, it's proposed, following the board's desire and directive, that July 1, that the Pitt County Development Commission is collapsed into a Department of County Government. The .94% tax rate goes away. It becomes combined within the, the general fund tax rate. So the proposed tax rate that we had referenced earlier, the 68.41, with the reduction of half a penny, does include fully funding the, the new Pitt County Department of Economic Development. So in terms of education funding, the next area of this, this presentation, the long and short of it is, the Pitt County Schools request, they had requested $42,963,624. Their request is being met in full. It's an increase of $1,805,813. Represents a 4.39% increase. You'll hear more from Dr. Linker this week regarding their justification for the need for this, and based upon the, the growth in the base, both in the ad valorem, sales taxes, and whatnot, we're able, able to accommodate this. This, these funding recommendations have nothing to do with the, the federal stimulus package that's, that's still, we're waiting on. The American Recovery Plan has nothing to do with those revenues. These, these recommendations are based upon the growth in our local base here, in our resources here in Pitt County. For PCC, Pitt Community College, they had asked for $6,403,326.
For PCC, Pitt Community College, they had asked for $6,403,326. We're recommending all of what they asked for. The actual increase is $234,415. That represents a 3.8% increase in their budget. Again, you'll hear from Dr. Rouse later this week, at the same time, same day you hear from Dr. Linker. On the next slide, in terms of education, whether it's operations, capital debt service, the total for education in all these categories, whether it's the current expense, capital one, two, and three, and the rent at the 44.3 million, the amount of money going to PCC at 6.5, the school capital reserve at 6.7, Article 46 at 5.7, and school improvements, 750 is a total of $64,878,29. I do want to note that as part of Pitt County Schools' request this year, they'd asked for about $4.8 million in deferred maintenance as part of the budget request that would have come before you as part of this package. And out of the Article 40 and 42 sales tax proceeds, because of the tremendous growth in sales tax revenues that we've seen, we are recommending in the budget, in the agenda package you have before you tonight, to go ahead and advance $2.4 million out of that revenue source in the county's budget or county's revenue coffers to allow them to proceed with that roof work, and we'll monitor that fund to see if any additional funds could be made later in the year. So that's a good news item that's even above and beyond the budget we're presenting before you tonight that is in your agenda. Moving on, for EMS district fund, this is recommended by the Oversight Committee, maintains their current rate of 5.95 cents, continues the capital replacement plan, and it does implement the tiered funding plan that you approved in your last meeting, based upon, I think, tiers one, one, two, three, and four, based upon number of transports. In terms of the next table, basically shows the revenues coming in, whether from the taxes on that 5.95 cents, the ad valorem taxes, the delinquent taxes, transports, Medicaid settlement. You can see where you got a recommended $6,946,447 million budget. And this slide here, in terms of EMS expenditures, kind of gives the breakdown of whether it's the county operations. We operate two of the 10 squads. You see the eight nonprofit squads. That's the remaining eight of the 10 that are nonprofit, showing what you had approved in the first column for the current year, what they requested in the new year, what is recommended in the new year, then the revised recommended, totaling back to the six-point, almost $7 million total EMS budget. On the next slide, fire district, within the volunteer fire departments, you do have two departments who are asking for a rate increase, Belvoir Fire Department and Sharp Point. Go to the next slide, it'll break it out. Belvoir is asking for a 1.25, 1 and 1/4 cent tax rate increase, and Sharp Point a 2 cent increase. You'll hear more from Randy Gentry, your emergency management director, when he presents later this week. On the next slide, area dealing with affiliate agency funding, these are our outside agencies that we consider affiliate. We almost, we kind of consider them, that if they didn't provide the service, more than likely, we as county government would be doing it as a department per se. Sherpa Memorial Library, we're happy to let the board know that the request meets, the recommendation meets the request, fully funding the Sherpa Memorial Library this year. They'd asked us for consideration of two capital projects, one on HVAC replacement and a roof project, $75,000 and $20,000. We're recommending those, and those are coming out of one-time appropriations for those two projects. Council on Aging requested 250, 200, recommending that. The Greenville, Pitt Greenville Airport Economic Stimulus Plan, we're recommending $80,000 this year, based upon activity that we're seeing with the number of aircraft that are being kept at PGV, and then the quarterly payments that we share equally with the city of Greenville for that plan. Terms of sustaining agencies, these are different from affiliate. These are agencies that we try to sustain going on. Community Crossroads is being funded at the same level, Drug Treatment Court at the same level, GPAC, Greenville Public Access Television, same level, and the Little Willie Center is the same level as current year. Total there is $69,685 going on, or the sustaining agencies, your libraries, Aiden, same level, Bethel, same level, Farmville, same level. Fountain, we did not hear from. We, I think we had tried communicating with them several, on several attempts, but never received anything back from them. Grifton Library, same level, and the Winterville Library, same level, for a total of $30,000. On the next area within sustaining agencies, the community of recreations and parks remains constant with this year, so does Aiden Arts, Farmville Community Arts Council, the Grifton Civic Center, Greenville Museum of Art, the Pitt County Arts Council, and then the last two are increases. One is the sub, under the Pitt County Arts Council for the Smart Art Program, increasing that from 5,000 to 10,000. The new one for this year is the North Carolina Museum of Natural Science at Greenville. They had actually requested this last year, $50,000 appropriation, because we were in COVID, and we had budgeted very conservatively in terms of our revenues, whether ad valorem taxes, whether sales tax. You recall, last year, we didn't even do a cost of living for our workforce. We did not make, there was no recommendation for the museum last year. This year, we're recommending $10,000 of the $50,000 request, and this total area, total 67,500. In terms of human resources, this budget allows for a 2.8% market adjustment recommended for 21, 22. We go by the January to January CPI published by the federal government. The current CPI, January to January, is 1.4%. The CPI for last year or the current year we sit in, which no cost of living was provided for the workforce, was also 1.4%. And so this basically is a 2.8% that makes that adjustment in the new year. On the next slide, position changes. We're recommending 28 new positions, and this was out of the total of, remind me, Brian, 40? Forty, forty-nine and a half. 28 new positions, three sheriff clerk, five positions that were approved on April 5. These were actually a part of the sheriff's request as part of this budget. You did pre-approve those, allow her to move into those in the current year, but still consider those drivers in this budget. We did eliminate one position, so you had a net increase total of 30 positions in the budget. Again, three of those were what you approved on the 5th, that again, she asked for it in this budget process. Position changes, again, you hear, you see the new position request, the 49.5, the total of all positions that were requested across the county, the new position recommendations within the manager's office, the community relations position for the human relations council, detention center asked for two positions, and you'll hear from the sheriff on that. EMS asked for four, register deeds, one. The sheriff still has three additional positions that she would like the board's consideration on, and those are being recommended as well as others she's, will be asking you about. Public health is recommended for six, social services is recommended for 10.5. They started at 19, or as you'll hear from the DSS director, it actually started at 32, brought 19 to us at the budget process. And then solid waste as an enterprise fund requested one, so 28 there. In terms of the next slide, the calculation rates for our benefits in terms of retirement that is basically mandated by the North Carolina General Assembly, what we pay into it, we'll be paying 11.4% into, on behalf of each employee, into the local government employees' retirement system. Law enforcement is a little bit higher than that. You can see the 401K that we provide for both law enforcement and all other county employees, life insurance, and then the hospitalization. It's important to note on the hospitalization that on, for the insurance participation fee paid by the employees is proposed not to change, whether you're qualified or not qualified. If you're qualified, you've basically had a health assessment, you're working on, you've established goals for your health, and you're meeting, getting points to get a certain number of points to qualify for that lower rate. If you're opt not to do a health assessment and do biometrics through the Blue Cross Blue Shield website, or not take classes or meet your health goal, then you pay the higher amount per month out of your pocket. On the next slide, classification study, this is a process we continue in-house where we look at all the, over a three-year period, we look at every single position within county government, except for those, I guess, in health and DSS, which are actually state agencies that are under the purview of the state. But all other positions, we do a third of each class of employees, and the next year, July 1, we will be doing, Brian? Public safety, so be sheriff, detention, those type of positions will be looked at. And at the end of that process, we're looking to make sure that we are competitive with the beginning salaries on the salary pay plan that we offer for those positions. So again, it's an ongoing rotation cycle of three levels, employee classifications, actually clerical, paraprofessional classifications are reviewed last, and there are no recommended changes in, from that study that HR has performed. On the employee medical insurance fund, for basically health insurance, on this, the first line where it says employee, we're going from 695 to 710. That is what Pitt County Government pays on behalf of each and every employee that receives the benefit of health insurance. That is built into the general fund expenditure side that is not passed on to the employee at all. The remaining three lines, family, parent slash child, employee slash spouse, are optional coverages that employee can opt if they so choose. Now, that is going up, and there would be additional costs out of pocket for an employee with that. And the last slide, employee medical fund, again, no employee participation fee changes, no change in the dental division reimbursement plan, and there are no coverage changes within the overall benefit plan that is offered to our employees via Blue Cross Blue Shield. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Brian, who's going to discuss the capital improvement plan.
So on our capital improvement plan, we met back at the end of January, and at that point in time, you all essentially blessed us to move forward through the budget process with the projects for the upcoming 21, 22 budget year, and we run all our numbers to see where we can make room and if there's an opportunity to do these projects. So what we typically will show you is what was presented in January, but we wanted to show you since January, based on our numbers, how some of the projects have changed in terms of amounts, funding source, and the year of which the project is going to take place. So for the sake of time, I'm only going to hit on the ones that actually changed since January. The first one being, in this case, if you look at the annual vehicle replacement plan, we had looked at $150,000. This would have been a cash-funded year. And the other, it's a three-year cycle, and the other two years of the cycle, we do look at a bank loan, but this year would have been, this coming year would have been a cash loan year. Based on our fund balance, we're looking at, instead of the traditional $150,000 cash amount, we're going to do the traditional bank loan amount, but we're going to fund it using our cash and the fund balance. The second item, if you'll look at, is the third item on the list, the Pitt County Office Building Renovation Plan. The dollar amount did not change. We were looking to set aside $100,000 to study the renovations of this building. We're just going to take it out of fund balance instead of current revenues. And then lastly, on this page, if you look at our centralized phone system, we did reduce the amount from 300 to 200, and instead of a bank loan, we are looking at using fund balance to advance that particular project. On our public safety side, the very first item, the animal shelter, we're looking at the replacement of the dog kennels, and we had placed that on the CIP with cash, and based on the bids that came in in April to complete phases two, three, and four of the animal shelter renovation project, this particular item was one of the alternates that was part of that bid process. So we, so it's not necessarily recommended for 21, 22, because we're going to include it within the completion of the animal shelter project. So we are doing it, but it's technically not part of next year's budget. Third on the list, if you look at the sheriff's administration building, we have talked about this quite a bit through the presentation already, we were looking next year just to do, as part of a bank loan, $250,000 for design and planning phase, and we decided, based on our fund balance, to take that entire project and to cap it at $6 million, which will include the design, which will include construction, and we are going to move that into its own project ordinance outside of the general fund. That way, we don't have to reappropriate the money each year if it takes more than one fiscal year. So in a way, we are continuing the project and advancing it forward at the same time. Those are the only changes from the public safety standpoint from January. Under our category of economic and physical development, we had our inspection software at 375. We were looking at a bank loan, actually lumping that bank loan together with our telephone system upgrade, and we've decided to keep the amount the same at 375,000, but to take the money out of fund balance. On our human services group, if you look second way down, last week, last board meeting, you got a presentation on the small safari mobile unit. As you know, it's over 25 years old. So we decided to advance that program up. The project was going to be slated for FY22, 23, and we're going to move that $612,000 to, from fund balance and advance it into the next fiscal year. And then finally, at the bottom of the page, this is the other half of our major building expansion, just again, very much like with the sheriff's administration building, we were looking at doing $250,000 for plan and design work. We decided to cap the project at 6 million, take the fund balance, and advance the project into its own project ordinance and to move it forward. On the education, nothing's changed since January. And then our final change is actually in our cultural recreation grouping. We had talked about the gymnasium at Alice King Park. We have submitted a grant to the federal government as part of that grant. Part of that process, we do have to look at some design money, so we're looking to, instead of doing cash or a bank loan for this, again, we're looking at fund balance to help pay for some of that design money. And when we will address the grant, I believe, in June or July, when we find out how that is proceeding with the federal government. On the environmental protection side, which is our solid waste, we did not make any changes from what was presented in January to what's in the recommended budget. As you can see, finally, in January, when you look at all of our projects, we were slightly under $6 million, and primarily with the advancement of the two building projects, that takes us slightly over $17 million.
And before we head on to budget highlights, I just wanted to ask Brian if he would assist me in, I guess, answering the question that you're probably asking in the back of your mind is, how, how did we get so much fund balance projected to June 30, and how can we do so many projects cash funded? Brian, if you can explain the difference that we've seen in ad valorem, property taxes, sales taxes, or residual cares act monies, and otherwise, maybe to give the board a basis for knowing how fund balances, what COVID, the COVID factor that has been applied to fund balance as well?
Sure. So if you guys go back to last year, we had no idea how this fiscal year was going to end, so it really starts there. I think the budget that we approved last year, really, we went very basic. And I think by going very basic and making sure that we were able to cover those services that we're required to cover, that we were able to set a new base budget. With the idea of not knowing how COVID was going to affect us, we didn't know about the stay-of-home orders, we didn't know about sales tax, we didn't know the impact of not having students on campus, we didn't know if we were going to be locked down. So we went as bare minimum as possible, and here we are today, still thriving. So we took that amount of expense into this budget year, and we've used that as the basis for 21, 22. Through the miracle of folks staying in the county and not traveling, through the miracle of the folks over at the tax office being very due diligence, and they're working collecting taxes, our register of deeds has seen a tremendous amount in effort. Our buildings, if you drive around Pitt County, buildings are going up. Our economic development folks have brought a lot of opportunities and announcements over the last year. Basically, even during COVID, we've seen significant growth, not only in our base, not only in our tax discoveries, sales tax alone. If you can imagine, folks did not do a lot of traveling over the last year, and so a lot of that money that they would have spent, whether they were saving money, whether they were getting stimulus money, whether they were still working, they spent that money in Pitt County. And that amount of money provided a significant more amount than we could have ever imagined. And so we're, want to utilize that amount to cash fund several of these projects. Also, keep in mind that we did reimburse ourselves with a Warren Farm property. That is an amount of money that we can turn around and use. Also, with the CARES Act, we were able to supplement several areas within our budget this fiscal year that we could, primarily on the salary side, that we can use CARES money, which thus freed up general fund money. So when you combine all of those together, just have an exceptional year from the revenue side, you know, we do not see that as a direct indication of next year. If you want to put it from an analogy standpoint... If you want to put it from an analogy standpoint, if you look at it in sports terms, we made the playoffs this year. It does not mean next year we will. So we, we took that base budget approach. We were able to come together with some really good numbers. And then we were able to look at these projects, several of which that we have discussed in my three years here. We've always talked about borrowing money. And here is an opportunity to, to use some existing money to advance these projects along. So that being said, this is how we kind of come to the conclusion that we feel very comfortable even recommending to you all the advancement of these projects while decreasing the tax rate, while looking at some other areas that Scott's going to hit on on the highlights. So overall speaking, we had a tremendous year. I've reached out to several of my counterparts across the state, especially in our larger counties, or medium to larger counties, are all seeing basically similar results. So it's not just a Pitt County thing. You could say it's a North Carolina thing, but this year has been quite well. And we want to take advantage of that to advance some of these projects.
I hate to even make the comment, but you might be asking yourself in the back of your mind, well, why, why aren't we reducing, reducing the rate more than half a penny? That's because the experience on sales tax and some of these revenues we've seen, whether registered deeds and others, we do not, we cannot count on those continuing. We really believe it's been primarily a COVID factor. And thus, that's why there's only a half cent reduction on, on the rate. In terms of budget highlights, to kind of wrap this presentation up, in terms of what is fully funded, Pitt County Schools request, Pitt Community College request, solid waste fund request, EMS fund requests. In terms of the facility needs, we establish as again, we establish again, the funding for the Sheriff's Office Administration Building, the DSS building expansion at the Human Services Center, the Pitt County Office Building Study to see what the future ability this building is, whether it's to be, could be renovated and used efficiently, or whether to be replaced. The uptown, the uptown department relocation study, where once the sheriff moves out of the courthouse, that space as well as the other space that's downtown that will free up, how we will reallocate that for, for county needs. And then the design funding for the park at the gymnasium, gymnasium at the park. And then the public health medical records area renovation. Also, we, in terms of vehicles, we mentioned the small safari mobile dental unit. And then the cash funding of vehicle increased from 150 to 650. Other items, again, this budget funds 30 new positions. You're going to hear a pitch from departments saying they need even, even more. And I'm sure they can justify it, but that we have, we have no room in the budget at this point in terms of reoccurring revenues. And you need reoccurring revenues to pay for recurring expenses, i.e. salaries and benefits, and, and, and such to go with it. The other, we funded other items, the Sheriff's Office radios, the new inspection software that was pointed out, the new centralized phone system, Shepherd Memorial Library capital requests, all with a general fund property tax rate reduction recommendation. So from here, this week, we move, as we already announced, the workshops content, will begin tomorrow, the fourth, fifth, and sixth, 8:30 to 12. We've mentioned next week, if, if needed, public hearing, June 8th at 6:00 PM, alternate date, June 21st at 6:00 PM. And with that, Madam Chairwoman, that concludes the presentation for the recommended budget for fiscal year 2122. And we'll be happy to take any questions. Or if you want to dwell on this and think about it overnight and hit us in the morning, we'd be happy to do either tonight or tomorrow.
Well, thank you for the presentation. But I, I see Commissioner White's hand. Do you have a question tonight, Commissioner White?
Yes, Madam Chair, I just wanted to, I guess, maybe just make two comments or questions. Scott, from my understanding, was that a half cent tax reduction that county staff is proposing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And it looks like, from my understanding, ever looking over the budget, that you were also proposing to fund Pitt County Schools' request at 100%. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, that is great. That is, that was my two questions for tonight. Thank you so much. I think that's wonderful.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other hands.
Commissioner Coulson?
Oh, I can't see his hand.
It must be a leftover from sometime before Scott.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you. We'll, maybe we'll have some questions tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to items for consent. First one, approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Can we just motion to approve all of the items for consent?
Madam Attorney, is that allowed?
Yes, that's typically how you do it.
Okay, all right. It's been moved in second that we approve all of the items for consent. Are you ready for the question? Madam Clerk?
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Good to meet you, David.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nonley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Thank you. Now move to items for decision. First one on the section is NC 43 South Cardo Land Use Plan. And I believe Mr. Rose is going to present this.
Yes.
James, your presentation is full screen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hopefully you can see my screen. Planning staff has been working diligently over the last month after hearing additional public comment and some comments from the board as well. So we wanted to bring back for your consideration tonight, a revised land use plan. And it's not just the map itself. We wanted to fully acknowledge throughout the plan that there had been some changes. So with that, I'll give you a brief review of where we've been thus far. We did hold a public hearing back on March 15. And after that point in time, we brought the plan back for further discussion at your April 5 meeting. As I've mentioned, we've been spending a fair amount of time going back through some of those comments. And tonight, we'd just like to share with you what we've done based off those comments. And what you have on the left side of your screen is the original plan. And most of you are familiar, what got a lot of attention was the area along Mills Road, just to the east of Hollywood's Crossroads. And this is Hollywood Crossroads right here, the H Conley is just adjacent to there. But this area in yellow, which was recognized as suburban residential, a lot of discussion. A lot of people felt like that just didn't fit into the area there. So what we've stepped back to do, recognizing that the county does not have control over, doesn't even influence the provision of sewer service, we've come up with the map on the right side of your screen. And basically, we have taken from the county's planning jurisdiction, any reference, taking out of that, any reference to suburban residential. So what you have now is this light green, which is rural residential and agriculture. And the darker green, as you get further down towards Chicotte, is predominantly agriculture in and of itself. There is a small yellow area up north, suburban residential, that is currently within the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction and therefore is controlled by their land use planning regulations. So I'll say, we took one full step back and acknowledged that this area, while under the control of the county, would be more rural and agriculturally oriented. Also to mention, a major component of this plan, the whole impetus for us starting, where a lot of these rezonings along the corridor itself. So what we really feel like is important for you, as well as staff, when you're dealing with rezonings, are some, are some of these areas that are rural commercial. And these are even as far south as you're getting down to Chicotte Crossroads. But further up, we've had several businesses that wanted to locate right around the corridor. And our current land use plan just did not acknowledge that. There's also some expansion of the suburban commercial further to the north. And you've had several rezoning requests there. So with that, those are the maps. We've also, in your package tonight, you saw some of the language, about a page and a half of changes there. We want to be right up front with some of the changes, right in the acknowledgements page. And each one of these times, you've probably seen that we've gone in just to recognize that the county did not control sewer service. Therefore, we were backing down from any reference to suburban residential and any dense residential type development there. So those are predominantly what you see. One other item on page 52, we did broaden some of the scope along the 43 corridor. Basically, in response to some of the rezoning requests you'd had recently, where if it's appropriate for small scale nonresidential uses, we would consider those case by case through a conditional zoning request. So that provides staff some guidance. It also helps you and the public recognize what would be going in with those requests. Those requests would require a site plan and also identification of the type of business going in there. So here's just one example, real quickly, about some of the revised language. As I mentioned, we do acknowledge that some of these areas may be in the process of receiving sewer service. And if so, that warrants some type of annexation process through the city. That would take that land area, those parcels, out of the county's control for zoning, and the city would then deal with that. But while it's in the county's jurisdiction, we would continue in a more rural pattern. So with that, tonight, Madam Chair, we do have the motions before you. There's a resolution as part of your package. And just as a reminder, the planning board has also reviewed this and has recommended unanimously approval of this plan. So we've got the required language in the resolution as to when it would take effect. That would be July, I mean, as soon as possible, I'm sorry. And we would recommend approval of that tonight, as well as adopting that official land use plan map that would then be incorporated into our comprehensive land use plan. So with that, Madam Chair, welcome any questions you might have tonight.
Scott, I can't see hands, so.
Madam Chair, I have my hand raised. This is Lauren.
Okay. All right. Speak, please.
Mr. Rose, I just want to ask some questions that I know that they are, that maybe they're obvious answers, but I just do want to go on record as asking these. Any future annexations by the city or any sewer plans current? So now by Greenville Utilities, all over that, correct? Were you able to understand me? I know that my internet is really faulty with the weather tonight.
That last phrase I missed, Commissioner White.
Okay. Any city, any future annexations that could be on the board for the city of Greenville and any current sewer lines proposed by Greenville Utilities, the county has no control over that, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
In this area, yes.
Okay. The next thing I have is just really a comment. I want to thank, I want to thank you and your staff for taking into consideration a new plan based on input from the community. The people that I have talked to today have been very grateful that we went from the suburban residential back to the rural residential, a lower zoning, a lower density zoning. So I do want to thank you for listening to those concerns and putting us back into a lower density zoning. I want to thank you and your staff for that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ward?
If there are no other comments, I would like to make a motion.
Yes, please.
I'd like to move that we adopt the North Carolina 43 South Cardo Land Use Plan effective immediately and to amend the official future land use map in the 2030 Pitt County Comprehension Plan, Use Plan, Comprehensive Land Use Plan, to refer to the NC 43 South Land Using Plan, including the extended area influenced shown on the proposed future land use map for all future development requests. I second that, Madam Chairman.
Mr. Rose, do we need the resolution included in that motion?
That was part of the motion, the first motion, yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, it's been moved in second that we approve all of that that Commissioner Ward said. Are you ready for the question?
Yes.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nonley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Attorney?
Yes, Madam Chair, on your next two items, you have the jail medical plan and the jail medical contract on for presentation by the Sheriff's Office. And I would like to, at this point, before you hear those presentations, recommend, well, it is my understanding that with regard to the jail medical plan, there are further revisions needed to that document. And therefore, I recommend deferring consideration of that plan until those revisions are received and reviewed by the board. On the jail medical contract, my understanding is that the sheriff is recommending a contract with Wellpass and that it will come back to the board for consideration of that contract on May 17, once that contract has been reviewed by the sheriff's attorney and myself. So my recommendation there is to defer this item until May 17 as well. If you defer both items, no motion or action would be necessary by the Board of Commissioners tonight. And then I'd ask you to provide the sheriff an opportunity for her to agree or to, or to speak, or to let me know if I've missed it.
Madam Chair, do you agree?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, we will move to the next, the budget amendment. And that's Brian, I believe.
Salem County Property.
No, we, we removed that from the agenda.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, Madam Chair, Board of Commissioners, I actually have three in a row. So this is going to be the first one. The first one that you have is for the animal shelter renovation project, phases two, three, and four, for $300,000. This is what we kind of alluded to earlier in the budget presentation. Back on April the 14th, we did open bids for the second time. And we are going with Laughlin Sutton Construction. They submitted the lowest responsive bid for a total of $1,377,408. 881,300 of that was for the base bid, and $496,108 was for all the alternatives. Based on the amount of money that we had set aside remaining on the project, we, we are asking for a budget amendment of $300,000 from fund balance to help to complete the rest of the renovation at the animal shelter. And this $300,000 will not put you in any type of negative impact on your goal of 18 to 20% of fund balance.
Commissioner Nonley?
Thank you, Madam Chair, motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve a budget amendment for the animal shelter renovation project. renovation project phase two, three, and four. Ready for the question, Madam Clerk?
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Brian, you up again?
Okay, next you have in front of you a budget amendment for our retiree medical insurance reserve for $1 million. This one's going to take me a minute to kind of explain our situation. Back in 2010, the board then decided to set aside $50,000 a year to create a reserve for our retiree insurance pot of money, based on our OPEB, other post-employment benefits, at that time, as we were coming out of the 2008 recession. This reserve would help to fund any future retirement insurance issues that we were unable to pay. Currently, we do what's called pay-as-you-go, so each year, we budget an amount, and fortunately, we are able to pay that, but the practice at that time, which, which I believe was a smart practice, was to set this money aside in case we needed it. Then in 2012, we had a large amount of fund balance in our employee health medical fund, and at that time, it was decided to move $400,000 of that into the retiree medical to help boost that reserve in the event that we ever needed it. However, from an accounting standpoint, we have not actually moved the money into the reserve. So what I'm asking tonight is a budget amendment for $1 million, because if you take $50,000 starting in 2010, plus the $400,000 from 2012, this year would have put us at a reserve of $1 million. We currently have $580,323 in what we like to basically want to call our retiree medical fund balance, and this would, this would increase that by $1 million. This will help us in the event, if we are ever short on our retiree medical, that is a liability that we have decided, as an organization, that we are going to fund for our folks who retire from the county. So I am asking for another budget amendment that, that should not have any negative impact on our fund balance percentage to properly account for the retiree medical reserve.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we approve this budget amendment as presented.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
I second that.
Okay, it's been moved in second that we approve this amendment as presented. Ready for the question, Madam Clerk?
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Brian, you up again?
All right, this is the last one, I promise, until at least next meeting. But last, last July, we started the process of looking at our Article 40 and 42 sales tax fund balance. We are required by law, in the Article 40 and 42 sales tax, to set aside a percentage for school capital and school debt, and last July, we decided to appropriate $4.8 million for deferred school maintenance. As we met with Pitt County Schools this year to go over their CIP and the budget process, they did present to us an additional list of facility needs, primarily on the roofing side, that totaled $4,854,255. That was part of their formal budget request, that is what they are presenting to their board. We as staff, based on where we are this year, being able to meet all of our existing obligations for Article 40 and 42 sales tax, we are recommending taking that 4.8 million and recommending half of that, $2,427,128, to be appropriated right now to go towards that $4.8 million in roofing. As again, this money is set aside, is restricted for school capital and debt needs, so therefore, we cannot use it for any other purpose. We do, as staff, feel like this will not have any negative impact on that particular restricted revenue. As we move forward, we just had the 2021 lobs, that's going to be paying a bulk of those annual payments, but we do feel at this moment that we can accomplish this and help the school system out.
Commissioner Ward?
I'd like to make a motion to approve this budget amendment as submitted.
Ms. Williams?
I second that.
It's been moved in second that we approve as presented. You ready for the question, Madam Clerk?
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move to number eight, appointment of home and community care block grant. Scott, you up?
Yes, Madam Chairwoman, you have an appointment, a recommendation to appoint Ramona Williams to this committee?
Motion to approve, Madam Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Ward?
Second that motion.
It's been moved in second that we approve the appointment of, I think, Ramona Williams to the Community Care Block Grant Committee. Ready for the question, Madam Clerk?
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Last item, appointment of, reapportment to the Farmers Market Policy Committee. Scott?
Yes, Madam Chair, Chairwoman, on this item, you have a recommendation to appoint Mary Hardy to this committee, and then also to reappoint Andy McLawhorn.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ms. Mary Hardy and to reappoint Mr. Andy McLawhorn to the Farmers Market Policy Committee.
Mr. Perkins-Williams?
I second.
Okay, your hands are still up, that's why.
My paper laying on it, let me put this hand down. I wonder why you were calling on me, thank you.
It's been moved in second that we appoint Mary Hardy and the other person to the Farmers Market Policy Committee. If a question, Madam Clerk?
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you. We're, we're down to commissioner comments and committee reports. Commissioner Coulson?
No comments.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
No comment.
Commissioner Albright?
No comment.
Commissioner Ward?
No comment.
Commissioner White?
Yes, I know that our budget workshop hasn't even started yet, but I want to thank our county staff for all their hard work, and for being able to come up with a budget that is a half cent tax deduction, and also funding our schools at 100%. That is awesome, I really thank y'all and applaud y'all for that.
Commissioner Nunley?
No comment.
Commissioner, Perkins-Williams?
We look good on sale tax. I'm saying to all the resident, if you haven't got your vaccination, now you know you need to get it, thank you.
Okay. I have no comments, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Motion to adjourn.
I'm ready to go.
Okay, it's been moved in second that we adjourn. Ready for the question, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.